Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon. I'd like to call this informational meeting of Tuesday, July 6, 2021, to order. If I go down our agenda this morning, or this afternoon, first item, the committee reports, Councilmember Knight's there is absent, so we're gonna skip the IM-26 Task Force and go right to council remarks. Councilmembers, any council remarks? Seeing or hearing none, I'm gonna ask if there are any counselors that are on the phone. Hearing none, we're gonna get right into our great presentations, EMS Annual Update and Rate Increase. Come on up, please.
Good afternoon, City Council. Alicia Colera, Health Department. I'm here to visit with you today with Damian Gonzalez, who is the COO for PC EMS. And we also have Sioux Falls Fire Rescue Division Chief Mark Bukovich and Captain Jeff Garden in the audience today, representing our various parts of the EMS system. So each year, as a city council, the REMS-A Board as well, or you as well as the REMS-A Board, receive an ambulor, and, apologize, annual ambulance contract report. You received this last Thursday, and so I'm going to just briefly go over the results of that report with you, and then Damian will take a deeper dive into the compliance. So the Health Department's role is to monitor for contract requirements and assure that they have all been met. And so there's a variety of areas that need to be compliant each year. For response time performance, you will see in your report that response time requirements were met each month over the contract period for the preceding year. Clinical performance, clinical measures, cardiac arrest outcomes, medical audits and case reviews are all part of the clinical standards that we evaluate. And clinical performance has remained strong from PC EMS even throughout the pandemic. And you'll see in your report that PC EMS has performed within or above numerous benchmarks, including the CARES National Cardiac Arrest Registry. For system improvements, PC EMS has facilitated many innovative programs to improve system performance, and Damian will touch on those in his report. Workforce stability is also an area that we evaluate, and PC EMS has taken several steps to address employee retention, such as wage adjustments and creating recognition awards for their employees. We also look at pricing compliance. Audits were done on their billing, as well as Medicare performs periodic audits, and those have all been conducted and found to be within compliance. And reporting compliance, PC EMS has a bevy of reports that they're required to provide, and they have done so each month as asked in the contract. So I'm here to share today that PC EMS has met all of their contract requirements for the preceding year. So the annual report that you received was also shared with the REMS-A Board at their meeting on June 23, and they did approve that report. And then, as well, this time of year, in addition to the report, we always bring ordinance forward for the annual rate increase. And first reading of that will be this evening. So the agreement between the City of Sioux Falls and PC EMS stipulates that the primary means of reimbursement for ambulance service is through fee-for-service of patient charges. Therefore, as the contract outlines, there is an annual rate that PC EMS is able to request, and the annual rate is the greater of 3% or the increase in the Consumer Pricing Index for the preceding year. And all of the rates and charges are to be approved by REMS-A and the City Council. So the Consumer Pricing Index for the year ending May 21 was 5%. Therefore, the patient care rate increase requested is 5% for this year. The REMS-A Board also heard this rate increase request at their June 23 meeting and approved that request. So again, tonight, you will hear first reading of that rate request. And at this time, I would like to invite Damian to come up and share the detailed report and help us answer questions.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for your time tonight to go over our last year's performance with the REMS-A and Patient Care EMS contract. This is my first time doing this with you guys, so thank you for your time, and it's nice to meet you all finally in person. So to start out with, one of the main pieces is that we become CAS accredited when we gain this contract. We've remained CAS accredited. This year was not a reaccreditation year, but we have been through one reaccreditation on that, and we have found no deficiencies there. We will be reaccrediting next year. We will start that process in the coming months. To touch on COVID, since it was such a huge impact last year, we did have over 3,500 either positive or suspected positive contacts. We maintained high levels of PPE. We did this with a national approach with our whole organization, ensuring we had stockpiles at each of our locations to make sure, in worst-case scenarios, we would never run out. We did also provide hard assets into the Sioux Falls area by way of two ambulances, which we worked with Sioux Falls Fire Rescue to provide the area in case of surge needs. So that, along with some of the other things you're seeing there, weekly updates, other types of PPE, we really had an integrated approach to it, and I can say that we mitigated the impact to our community very well. And as we saw across the nation, there were huge impacts, but we did a very, very good job here in Sioux Falls with COVID. As far as our, those clinical KPIs that we were talking about, these are our time measures, where we believe that the time of the on-scene interaction impacts the outcome of the patient. So we have 13-minute on-scene time for trauma patients, and these are significant trauma patients, high injury types. We have a 13-minute average on-scene time for stroke-suspected patients, and then a 14-minute on-scene time for what we call STEMI patients, which are our cardiac patients, our critical cardiac patients. So all very, very good times. The goal is under 15 minutes, and we were able to achieve that this past year. As Alicia said, with the CARES Act, this is a national benchmark. This is a database where many, many different systems put information into, and we were able to exceed the national rates on both outcomes for cardiac arrests and for people that had a shockable rhythm, which is very, very good. We have a very integrated pit crew CPR style here, and it's a very successful model for our community, for these types of patients. Patient satisfaction, we conduct these surveys randomly through a third party every single month. They reach out to people that have been transported by us, that were in a condition to remember the transport, so there are some qualifiers there. And if you see the overarching trend, that is satisfaction, which is in the high 90s every month. And then these blue bars are engagement, so these are top box ratings. Again, the benchmark for that's between 40 and 50%, and we exceeded that absolutely every month, doing a great job. The paramedics and EMTs not only taking care of people clinically, but doing it in a kind and compassionate way. So now we're gonna get into a little bit more about calls and compliance. So this first graph is to give you guys a year-over-year trend of calls for service. And we can see that there is a growth trend here. Early in 2020, we did see that first initial impact of COVID, but later in the year, we returned to our normal trends of growth here in our EMS system. So we average anywhere around 10% growth calls for service year-over-year for the last 12 months. That can come and go through the months, but it definitely is something that we're seeing every single year here in Sioux Falls as the city grows. This shows us a little bit of the priority mix, which gives us a little bit of an insight into the acuity of those calls as they come in through Metro Dispatch. So we can see here that we have a large proportion of P2, which is emergency, non-life-threatening, and P3, which is non-emergency, non-life-threatening. So that's the difference between lights and sirens, but those are the bulk of the work we do in this system. As far as our transport trends, this is another year-over-year graph for you, and again, we see some growth. It's not as large as the calls for service, but again, both work into the consumption of our ambulance resources in the community, and we do continue to see growth year-over-year in transports. This graph here was to give a little bit more of a holistic perspective in compliance. So the blue line over top is that calls for service. The green line is transport, so anytime we took somebody to the hospital. And then the two lines at the bottom show the percent of either late calls or outlier calls. So we are able to mitigate those really well, even through the surges in volume. We focus heavily on this every single day to make sure we're meeting the needs by putting resources out on the street at the right times, in the right places. This breaks it down a little bit more by priority, and if you look at the top of the graph, that red line is the 90% compliance standard for the contract here in Sioux Falls. And by priority, we have to meet that for each individual call type, not just overall. And we can see here by every call type, we were able to achieve that. And then we have more details there at the bottom for you, month by month. We do go over the exemptions here, so these are exemptions that are allowed by contract that are given by REMS-A, reviewed every single day on a case-to-case basis, and those are given in-report by month through REMS-A on the exemptions that they've given. So this is a little bit of a peaks-and-valleys graph, but that's mainly because it's a lower number compared to our call volume. So we can see here that, on the whole, our transports compared to late's or outliers were hitting, were hitting the mark very, very well on meeting and exceeding that 90% compliance. One other place that we survey every single year is employee engagement. We want to make sure that we're being a good employer. So you can see here, this is, this last survey, which happens in the end of 2020, compared to the one the year prior, overall, was just under 80%, up from just under 70 the year before. And then we break it up into three areas: work environment, supportive engaged culture, and personal and professional development. Each exceeded the year prior. This is something that we're striving to improve even further, and we should see some improvement here. When we go into the system improvements, we believe that this will have an impact on our employees as well. So we did a big thing this year, which you saw a little bit in last year's report because it had begun, which was we replaced our ambulance fleet. So all 10 trucks in the system were replaced with brand-new ambulances. That was about a $1.2 million capital input into this system. It is a contractual requirement. There is an aging limit on these ambulances, and that contractual requirement was met by the deadline of May 21. We also are deploying brand-new response gear, so bags and equipment into the system. We have pushed that out to Sioux Falls Fire Rescue for their ongoing training to ensure that the system's aware of the new bag, and that we have good integration on scene. We've upgraded all of our mobile internet access points, so we have cellular-enabled ambulances. We've upgraded all those to the newest version this year. And we've also purchased and are ordering new, what we call mobile data terminals, which are the interface which the EMTs and paramedics receive information about the calls and the patient that they're responding to. One big move, in tandem with REMS-A through the EMS grant that they offer every year, we brought First Watch into this system. It's currently in the integration stages. And what First Watch is, is an data analysis tool, which allows us to see trends in community incidents and responses from a system perspective or from time perspectives, from geologic location, or geographic locations, excuse me. And we can use that information to better assess the situation, respond appropriately, or counteract trends that we may see developing. One other piece of this First Watch software is something that Patient Care EMS has invested in into the system, is the First Pass module. By having this integrated here, we will be another community with the First Pass product that participates in 100% chart review. Every single patient, every single chart, will pass through the system for quality measures. If for any reason that chart does not meet a quality measure, it will be placed into a queue to be reviewed by a human. If that standard is still not met, then that clinician will receive coaching and counseling and quality improvement. So this is something that we're able to use for every single patient contact, which is extremely, extremely valuable for our community, for residents and our visitors, for us to make sure that that standard of EMS care is the absolute highest it can be. Those are the big improvements that we've done this year, but really, it's an overarching theme of system integration and working with Sioux Falls Fire Rescue, Sioux Falls Police Department, REMS-A, and Metro Communications to make sure that the standard of EMS care in our community where we live stays at a certain level, that when you call 911, it is a seamless from A to Z care plan, until we get you over to our health systems, which are also our partners, and they can take it from there. Thank you very much. Happy to answer, Neve.
Thank you. Counselors, questions, comments? Counselor Starr?
Yes.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
No, no problem.
It's one of those days. If you could go back to your slide 11.
Which slide was it?
11. It was the trending by priorities?
Yes, absolutely.
This is the first time that I've seen where we've been, not been at 100% for Priority One calls. A little bit, when you look back at history, have we ever been late for Priority One calls prior to 2020?
As far as late goes, I would have to consult the previous data. We have never had a Priority One outlier. I am positive in that. And I am not sure, as far as the past entire contract years, if there's ever been a late Priority One call. I'm not sure on that.
Okay, because that's why I was surprised, because then I went back to the minutes that are online, and all of the monthly reporting's gone from the minutes. So I was trying to find where, each month, where the report comes, and that's where I was seeing some of these... I'm falling between Priority One and outlier, or outliers and late, and trying to make the terminology work. So it's been a while since I've looked at these, so I appreciate a little bit of that. The other is, I, for some reason, nine minutes or eight minutes and 59 seconds. When, flip back to the slide that had the, where you talked about 13 minutes versus... It'd be, it's not numbered, I believe it's your slide number four. There we go, you're ahead of me. For some reason, eight minutes and 59 seconds comes to mind of timing, and then we're talking 13 minutes now.
Correct.
Where's the...
Yeah, absolutely. So the eight minutes and 59 seconds response time requirement, these are the on-scene, so we're already there. This is from the moment we say hello to that patient to the moment we have wheels moving to the hospital, because we know these are very critically injured, or ill individuals.
Perfect. So gotta combine the two groups of numbers to kind of get there to... Because sometimes you're on-scene in four minutes and into the... I got it. That will work for me for now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions, councilmembers? Seeing none. Thank you, guys, for your report.
Thank you.
Excellent, as always. We're gonna move on to B, the Senior Disabled Municipal Property Tax Refund, and I will be giving that. As you know, I've talked to most of you at a high level on this, and what we've designed this to do... Go ahead, Jim, go to the second page there. This is a draft. We'll be working with the administration to develop the rules. That is their job. So you can see here, what we've had to do is to listen to the concerns that we've heard from the senior citizens in Sioux Falls about, quote, "taxing us out of house and home." So we took the state's assessment for their tax, property tax freeze, which you can see in line, the single-member household is an income of $29,565. Multiple-member households, income of $36,956. That's the state's requirements. Must be 65-year-old or disabled, as defined by Social Security, have ownership in the property. Those are the state rules. Now, if we go to the next page, what my proposal to do is to refund 100% of our municipal property tax up to $500. It'd be in the estimate that Jim David has come up with so graciously, is 443 households, which is estimated at about $250,000. And we will then do a supplemental appropriation and an ordinance. One of the reasons that this has come up is, as we sit through every year to listen to people about their property tax, it occurred to me that we're not doing enough for our senior citizens and those people that are really, really suffering. So that is the program that we've come up with. It will be brought to the administration. They're aware of it, but we have yet to define the rules, which then we would come back when appropriation and ordinance. Questions? Counselor Jensen?
Thank you very much. It's more of a comment, so I'll be really brief about it, but, you know, we sit through these council meetings, or we've sat through these council meetings in the past, and we hear a lot of talk about this type of an issue. And I just want to thank you, even though there's still a lot of the details to be formulated and worked through, I want to thank you for actually having the courage to stand up and bring something forward, a solution rather than just the problem. And I want to encourage, you know, our support behind that, because not every day do we have someone that's willing to step up and actually do something. So I want to thank you and look forward to seeing this thing through, to our council. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate your kind comments. Counselor Erickson?
Thank you. Yes, thank you as well. I appreciate that. I just, I like thinking outside the box, and I'm grateful for that. You guys did that. Talk to me a little bit. Is this essentially the same as the county program? So this will just be the city's portion? So you can also, a person can apply for a county freeze, and the county portion can be frozen. Is this the, will this be the exact same program? Or is it, just unpack that a little bit for me.
It's a great question. Our intent is to use the forms that the county currently uses to determine eligibility and to have them, forward them to us, so we could actually give a rebate. Instead of a freeze, on top of a freeze, it is a rebate back. So we're still working through the details. That's why you don't see an ordinance right yet. But the county, in concept, said, yeah, we think we can do that, forward those names to you, which would make it administrative ease. And we've talked, we've met with the finance people, and our concept is to send them a check, not just, you know, do it electronically. Let's send them a check, the Gary Hansen method of the tax rebate way back when. But actually, let people know that we are caring. Now, none of the council member's signature will be on there, but we send them a check back.
And thank you for that, because year after year after year, when we sit through and we hear the same stories of, "You're taxing me out of my house." This is exactly what you're trying to do, is make sure that you're keeping that affordability there for them and that we're not taxing them out of their homes. And so, yeah, I think this is, this is, again, coloring outside the lines, and I'm appreciative of this being brought forward. So I think this is a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Starr?
Yes, thank you. Jim, if, could you roll back one slide for me? Yeah, I believe. The thing that I kept looking at was the income amounts. It is tied to inflation through the tax freeze program, so that part of it is taken care of as well. It's, when you look at average Social Security income, if that's the only retirement that you have, you can squeak under, you can't have any other income-wise when you start balancing what, where that number comes from. It's tough for a lot of people to qualify as, as part of that, if you have a 401K or in those years where you maybe have to take a distribution and have Social Security, might kick you out at the top of it. And I think there's also some, some hope that we include more people to apply for the program, but keeping it simple, the county treasurer's doing this work already. They do the income verification with folks as they submit their property tax freeze numbers. So a lot of that works there, and it just, it's a simple way to do it. It's probably, the income threshold is probably lower than I'd like to see it, but that at least gives us a good start with a couple of people in, living in their homes and stuff. So, again, with keeping it as simple as possible and having the work already done, it's just a matter of forwarding those forms. It'll be interesting. I can't imagine many people would object that their information being shared with the city if they're getting up to a $500 tax rebate as part of the program. So there might be still some issues to work out there, but I think it's a great program, and it's a great way to solve, and at least make an attempt to keep people in their homes. Because when you balance what it costs to put someone in assisted living or a nursing home versus being able to live in their home, which is what most elderly folks are looking to do, this really makes sense. So, thank you, Counselor Sale. I appreciate all the work that you put into this.
Thank you. Other comments? Counselor Kylie?
Just a question. Can you speak a little bit to the timing of the rebate? Is the rebate gonna come prior to them paying their taxes, after they've paid their taxes? Or have you thought that through?
At this point, it determined by when the county would send us the information. So the county does the verification, and they would send us that information. I can't comment on what their timeline is for that, but as soon as... Maybe somebody in the audience or Jim David would know when that timeline would be.
The conversation is very preliminary, but the thought is that this would be a refund. So the individual would pay the property taxes, and then the city would receive that information from the county and then refund it back to that citizen in the form of a check.
And the individual would have to prove that they have paid the tax before they're eligible for the refund?
And that will, that's one of the, that's part of the information that would be necessary from the county, that that had been paid and therefore can be refunded. You're correct. You don't want to get in front of it, refund when it hasn't even been paid. So you're correct in that.
Are there laws preventing us from paying it ourselves, that it goes directly to the county instead of the individual and bypass the rebate process?
We've had those conversations with finance, but the thought is not to put the burden on the county, and that the city would just take the administration of the program. So I don't know if that answers, answers your question, because there was a preliminary discussion about, well, maybe the county just doesn't take that portion of the property taxes, omits the municipal portion of that. But the thought process is we're placing that on the county, and that would be probably difficult for them to administratively handle. So let's have the city do it. There is precedent in the past, in the early 2000s with Mayor Hansen, that this checks had been sent. And so, and also, it brings attention to the fact that it is the City of Sioux Falls that is actually remitting these tax dollars back to the citizen. There might be some confusion that it's the county that's doing it. It's a county program. It's a city program.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Starr?
Yes, and Counselor Kylie, the deadline to apply is April 1st. So as you make that first round of property taxes, the thing that, good or bad, depending on how you look at it, we still have a lien process. If something did fall through the cracks, it's part of figuring out exactly when they pay versus when they, is it money that they can use to pay their taxes and balancing some of that? So holding out till that April 1st, when the last ones finally come in, the applications, and then the verification process that it takes the treasurer to do some of that work. So if we accidentally paid it, we still have the process of putting a lien against the property, which gets confusing, but you don't want to pay it until it's there, so.
Thank you.
My thought on it is, I mean, we're trying to lessen the burden on the homeowner. I mean, if it's a burden, and it's, in some cases, it's a situation where they just can't come up with the money, period. They can't pay it. So if they can't pay it, they're not going to get a rebate. So I'm wondering if there's any kind of a workaround.
And I will address, in those discussions, we had preliminary to see which is the easiest, best way to get this handled. And so far, it's been, we don't want to, this is our program. We should take care of it, not the county. And that, that's where we're at today. I'm not saying it's not going to evolve to be something like that, but certainly, we're trying to make it as easy. We're asking them for a favor already to send us a spreadsheet, so hopefully it works, and maybe we can address that.
No. No, command you for the offer.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next item. Again, it's me, the Public Safety Home Ownership Program. And again, I've had discussions with all of us and some at a deeper level on this project than others, but I wanted to say that this is coming forward also, and we still have some of the final details to put together with the administration. They know it's coming, and they're working through to put this together. So the concept, it's $500,000 supplemental appropriation. We can use the ARPA funds, my understanding of that. It's a down payment of $20,000, twenty percent, whichever's less, on a $300,000 or less home on neighborhoods that is based on the qualified census tract, and I'll get into that. So it's for law enforcement and professional firefighters. They must be employed at least a year, and a lien is placed on their property for five years. So if they wanted to flip it, that's not what this is about. The concept on this is done in a lot of other cities, and if you get a fireman or police officer that is living in your block, you tend to have a lot safer block than without them there. And that is the concept. It's worked in other cities. We're going to try it. This is more of a pilot program to see if it's going to work. I believe it will help our core neighborhoods. And let me read to you what the qualified, this comes from the federal government, qualified census tract, must have fifty percent of the households with income below sixty percent of the area medium gross income or have a poverty rate of twenty-five percent or more. That is what a qualified census tract is. So if we have a police officer or firefighter that wants to move into these neighborhoods, we know it's going to be a safer neighborhood when it's done. And also, on, secondly, as I talked to the current police chief, Burns, he said that it would be an incentive as they hire new people, that the police officers, you know, they're not coming in at an exorbitant salary, and to try and fight a house in today's market, sometimes it's a little tight. So that is the concept that we've come in. I think it's going to, I know it's going to help our neighborhoods be safer. We don't need all our police officers and firefighters living in Harrisburg and T. We need them here in the city. With that, I'll take questions. Counselor Erickson?
I think I know the answer to this, but again, I like it. Does this, if we are using it as an incentive, does that impact the labor contract?
No.
You know that better than anyone else, so.
In my opinion, it does not, because it's not exclusive to the city of Sioux Falls police officers. A qualified police officer could also be deputy sheriff for the county, or it could be highway patrol. And there's two professional firefighters. There's the city of Sioux Falls and also the air guard firefighters or full-time firefighters, they would also qualify.
Makes sense, yeah. No, I like it. I think it's a great idea to try to diversify the neighborhoods and also, you know, just getting to know your neighborhood and having that presence regardless of where you are. So it's not reinventing the wheels, and it's been a great success in other communities. And so I certainly think it's something that should be adjusted and tried. And also, it shows that support to our law enforcement and our fire. Oftentimes, while it'd be nice to have just a pot of money that we can shell out all the time, we don't always have that. But if we can do incremental things such as this, to show our support, to let them know that they matter, that this city council does appreciate their service to our community. We talked to the new, the soon-to-be new chief, and that's, I mean, it's just incredible, the support that they feel from this council. And so I think this is another way to show that, and then really, the impact it has on the computer community is just tenfold. So I think it's something that should be certainly tried and see what happens.
Counselor Silverberg? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, probably will reiterate a lot of what was just said just last week when I had visited with the incoming chief. I'd said that too, where I think numerous times, we've all kind of thought we've had maybe excess funds or things come about, and you always want to do something a little extra for your law enforcement, your firefighters and that, and then there's always some loophole where you can't. And I even brought that up last week too, as I'm sure you folks probably did when you visited with them too, but I thought, you know, if there's ever anything we can do to help or show our appreciation or do extra things, if you'd let us know. I mean, it's just kind of amazing that it had just come up, so I think this is terrific. And this has been going on in other communities and that.
Correct.
And it's a pretty good track record. Anywhere close to us, or?
The research we've done, there's nothing too close, but certainly on the West Coast, they've done this quite a bit.
Okay. That sounds terrific. Good job.
Counselor Starr?
Yes, two questions. One, is it taxable, the, that part of it?
I'd have to refer to CPA to ask that, but I.
But it's, yeah, whether it's income or how the other housing programs work, and that, I guess, is my follow-up then to that, then is, this would be, your thought process is it would be administered through the housing division, through planning, or would it be?
Correct, housing.
The two departments. So it's just another housing program. What I, my only concern is, is that we continue to promote it so that our employees know that it's available or all, anyone in law enforcement or professional firefighter, so that sometimes we do these additional things, like I look back on some of the bus things that we put programs together and we don't tell anyone about it. And so I got a feeling this one will, the word will spread pretty naturally, but to make sure that our folks know it's there for them, so.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the last public comment. If there's anybody here that would like to comment on any of the topics brought up today, now is your opportunity. Seeing none, I take a motion.
Some of them.
To, you will, if you could read A, that'd be great.
Excuse me, thank you. I'd make a motion to go into executive session consulting with legal counsel or reviewing communications from legal counsel about proposed or pending litigation or contractual matters pursuant to SDCL 125, 2, 3.
Second.
Moved in second. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, say nay. Thank you. We'll move into executive session.[1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03][1789.03]